Roll call, please.
Mrs. Melissa Walker?
Four.
Mrs. Cotterman?
Four.
Mr. Wigtin?
Four.
Mr. Moser?
Four. And entertaining motion for previous board meeting minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
All second.
Discussion? I think Melissa, Tim, second.
Yeah. I'm already second.
Sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Melissa Walker?
Four.
Mr. Wigtin?
Four.
Mr. Or Mrs. Cotterman?
Four.
Mr. Moser?
Four. And presentation of certificates, any? Nope. And recognition of visitors, anybody like to come up and speak? Bring them all up, identify yourselves.
My name is Christopher Free, I am now teaching Spanish up at the high school. But along with Ms. Jessica Coons and Ms. Laura Phillips, this summer we took our trip to Costa Rica. So I know we've been talking about it for a while. And yeah, the slides are getting kind of funny, but they are behind you if you want to follow along. Obviously, we're missing some of our kids today, but teenagers in the summer working on different trips is why they're not all here. Mrs. Phillips, we tried to convince her to come incognito to things, but she's at that period of retirement, she's not allowed back on property for a while. Oh, no, it was just there. While we're waiting for that to come back up, I would like to introduce the twins. This is Anthony and this is Claudia. They just graduated from Gauian in May. And they were fortunate enough to take trips with us both to Peru and Costa Rica. And they're really terrified to talk in front of you, but I brought them along to say something. Here you go.
I would like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to go on both of the trips. We greatly appreciate it.
What was your favorite thing about the Costa Rica trip, Claudia?
I really liked the hot springs and the ziplining, it was super pretty. And seeing the beach on both sides, the Pacific and Atlantic. Pacific and Caribbean Sea was super pretty.
Anthony, what was your favorite thing to eat in Peru?
The seafood.
Really, the seafood?
Particularly the fish.
All right, now we got our slides back. We went June 9th to June 18th. The phrase that you hear all the kids say a lot was the phrase pura vida, which means pure life. But it's just kind of like that Hawaiian aloha, that it's like a hello, goodbye, how are you? It's just kind of like have a great time, so it's a really positive phrase. This was Sydney's message, because she didn't make it with us today. Her favorite thing was seeing all the wildlife, because she is going off to study marine biology. So she liked the reptiles, aquatic animals. Anytime we saw an animal between Anthony and Sydney, they were like the first ones up there touching them. And here, I think we have a picture of Anthony too. So this was a female rhinoceros beetle, that was pretty much the size of the palm of your hand. I did not touch it, but the kids were like, oh, let me cut. Anthony's like trying to get one out of a tree and, you know, our guide was really fun about it. So iguana, and then the food, of course, was fantastic. Fresh fruit, you know, all kinds of different things that the kids tried. So some of them were super brave, some of them kind of stuck to the, stuck to the normal. This was our departure one, and when I first sent that out to parents when we left, Mrs. Johnson's like, where's my daughter? I was like, what? So out of panic, I went back through and like, there's Kalen, just her eyeball behind Mrs. Phillips. But we took another group picture once we got to the airport, once I realized that she was in the picture, she was just kind of hidden away. A couple of the kids, it was their first time flying, really going anywhere, so it was a big thing. It was very exciting, they were nervous about going through, through customs and security. We did discover on the way back that you can't take certain things home through customs. You may be able to take it anywhere else, but coming back through, we had to do to buy one of those rain sticks made out of bamboo where you turn it upside down and move it, and it makes a really soft sound. Well, that's a compact powdery substance that triggers the TSA to take it, swipe for explosives, and then take the kid. It was a bit of a panic, because I was afraid we were going to miss our next flight, but we did make it finally, so. But we learned a lesson there, too. This was Tortuguero on the north coast, this is where the green sea turtles typically do their nesting and hatching in the fall. We are about three weeks too early to see the nesting, so we know next time if we take a trip there to kind of go a little later. But we did get to see a lot, most of the wildlife up close here. So we had a spider monkey there, these are the white-faced capuchin monkeys. The place we stayed was Pachira Lodge, this is the flower in the upper right-hand corner that it's named after. Nice little bungalows, about eighty, eighty-five degrees with no air conditioning, just screens outside. So every morning, I'll let you listen to our natural alarm clocks, we had about four forty-five, five AM every day. So our means of transportation was boat, it was fantastic, a lot of fun, we got to see a lot of fish and, you know, a lot of different things. So these are little crabs that lived outside of our lodge there. So this is the one that had this sea turtle-shaped swimming pool, which was fantastic. In downtime, we played a lot of games, this is Mrs. Coons teaching the kids how to play skippo and the other ones are playing euchre in the back. And then, of course, waterproof uno at the pool, so. Animals, one of the most interesting ones was this little red frog, is a strawberry poison dart frog, only about the size of your thumbnail. But his legs are blue, so he looks like he's also wearing blue jeans, so that's his little nickname, so. And then Sydney with a giant cricket, which is about, once again, the size of your palm, like five hundred times the normal size of the crickets we were used to. So, and this was the only little sea, only turtle we saw, a little box turtle. So iguanas, different kinds of birds, crocodiles, breakfast, lunch, and dinner were provided by this company, so we got to try all kinds of different foods every day. One of the scarier things that we saw was this caterpillar that was beside our cafeteria. And he looks terrifying with his little spikes, but he turns into an owl butterfly. So it's, once it gets big, about the size of your hand, each wing, they have little eyes on him, it was really interesting. Try to go, oh, and then the beetle's again. The closest that we got, and evidently this was a once-in-a-lifetime experience for us, once we finally got a hold of the guide and told us, and I explained to him what the sloth did, but we had a two-toed sloth climb down the tree, and then it, I thought was doing a little dance, I wasn't quite sure what he was doing, and then it walked off and climbed up another tree. Evidently, it was using the bathroom, which sounds really odd, but they only do that about once a month. And our guide, when he told us, he's like, that's amazing, he's like, I'm not going to be able to beat anything else from now, because they only do it once a month. He's only seen it happen about three times in all his tours, so that was kind of exciting. I felt now that we were encroaching on the poor little guy. But that's what they look like, they're not exactly as cute as you think. He was covered with moss and he was, yeah, kind of, that's interesting. Trying to go faster. The kids had a blast at the school that we visited, which is a lot like Madison High School. It was a school designed for, it had a STEM program, it had a hospitality program, where the kids were learning about being tour guides, using technology, opening of restaurants, they were doing farming. There was all kinds of really neat things that the kids got to do. So they loved interacting with other students, you know, most of them didn't speak much English, so that made our kids speak in Spanish. And then the other kids got to try to speak English back to them. So we did get to visit their English classroom, and they thought it was hilarious, because the same activities we asked them to do in Spanish, they did with us, like practicing ordering food and, you know, that kind of stuff. So it was a lot of fun, they learned a lot, it was nice to connect, and I think some of the kids are still kind of like Snapchatting back and forth with them. But the background of the, the school was Arinol volcano was the background of it. And you, it was really cloudy that day, unfortunately, you could only see it for a second at a time. But the kids got to sit around and talk and visit with a lot of the students, it was a lot of fun. This is the hotel that we stayed at, was like a little bungalow-type place at the base of the volcano. But it was dark and cloudy that time, so we didn't get to see the volcano break. These are the hot springs that Claudia was talking about. We went there at nighttime, and of course, being in the water, not a lot of great pictures, but Isabel had brought her little pouch for taking pictures, so this is what we had. So I could have just stayed there the whole time, like I would live there, it was amazing. Zip lining in the cloud forest, the canopy walk, just all kinds of fun things. Some of us were a little scared of heights, so the zip lining was a little bit intimidating, but we still had a great time. Where Ms. Phillips and I are on the left, that's the Pacific Ocean in the background, that we were high enough to be able to see all the way to the coast, so it was really exciting. Sorry, we had a cooking lesson and a dance lesson, Anthony learning to cook rice, which will be an important skill here when he joins the military, here in a couple of months, learn how to cook for himself. But it was a chicken and rice dish and making homey tortillas. Animals, another scary one, a scorpion that was, you could use a blue light or a black light to see them, but it blended right into the tree and we didn't even see it until he had the light on it, the guide. Probably the kids' favorite hotel was this last one in Capos, was on the Pacific side. The pool was really cool, we were about a two-minute walk from this beach. They were trying to spell Ohio twice, and the photobomber clearing the back waving along with the rest of the group. But it was absolutely beautiful, the sunsets, sunrise. There's another picture here, we've got somewhere of what it looked like from our hotel room windows. This is one of their favorite treats, was called a Churchill, from Winston Churchill. It was kind of a slushy milkshake mix, but it was interesting, because it also had canned fruit in it, like fruit, mixed fruit cups? It was like ice cream mixed fruit cup, and then more ice cream and a slushy over top of it, it was a weird combination. But the kids were so excited about trying it, so, yeah, Hannah, Emily saw the little stand and made the driver pull over, and we all had one. A lot of little candids of the kids. I did learn what a point five was, we think I had at least a hundred or so of everybody's foreheads where the kids were all playing, so, for closer, but. They sent a lot of fun pictures to us. That was the view from our hotel room, this is the, the peacock that joined us for lunch, and he loved french fries, so the kids would literally feed him anything. Animals in Monta O'Antonio, their national animal is a green red-eyed tree frog. So we just happened to see him on the last day. And the toucan, which they're very scary-looking animals, they're very serious, but they're predators, which I did not know that they were carnivorous, but, yeah. San Jose, the last night before we left, another dance lesson for them. I was a photographer during those, so you don't see me dancing, but Mrs. Phillips and Mrs. Coons are in there, you know, having a good time. Hammocks, that was at the pool. And, okay, so he's going to help me. So these were the sounds of the animals that woke us up. And the first one is a gray-necked wood rail, is what it's called, but it's a bird. I just called it the turn signal bird, because I didn't know what it was, and now you get to understand why. About five fifteen in the morning, for a solid thirty minutes. Next is the howler monkey. And that was the, the lodge without windows, so the screen, it was extremely loud, once they get about five fifteen, five thirty in the morning. So, and it was hard to get them all in the sound, but the middle one is what? And I sat straight up in bed the first time. Say, do I just keep clicking? But it's the males that make that noise, and they kind of argue back and forth about territories, so that was our alarm clock in the morning, so. And finally, home to Cleveland, so Claudia has a little treat for you that we brought, is milk chocolate-flavored guava.
Thank you.
So if you'd like to try some. They were all about the snacks and all the different foods that they got to try, but we had a great time.
Did you say guava?
Guava.
Okay, just making sure it's not a bug or?
No, no, that's mostly Mexico and the, this little crickets that they have during Day of the Dead, so.
Well, my husband's brought home cricket suckers before, so I'm like, no.
Yeah, I think that's more of a Mexican thing, I've seen the ones with scorpions too inside, I pass on those.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I've even seen tarantulas, like, there was one in the woods, and I did not take a picture of him, because I was freaking out, because the, his little paws were like this big, like, as you can see, sticking out along the edge of the dirt. So I just walked really fast past him, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a great trip for the kids.
All right, administrative committee reports, anything from legislative? Oh, yeah, I thought there was two. Athletic board?
We met last month and just finalized budgets for spring sports, and looked at last spring's sports stuff, so. I don't, there's a couple of copies up here if anybody wants any.
Student representative, anybody? Okay, facilities? Your report, board policy?
There is a few, there's three policies under superintendent's business, and if anyone has any questions about them, let me know. I have the redlined versions too in my email, if anyone needs to see what changed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Student achievement?
So with school not being in, we only have something to report from the career center. So they're excited to announce the following student achievements. Eleven of twelve certified nurse aid graduates earned their CNA certification. Five of those graduates also earned their adult high school diploma. Two of two welding students earned their welding certifications, and one of one phlebotomy graduate passed a certification exam to become a registered phlebotomy technician. They're also very excited to announce their partnership with Tranco Driving, Truck Driving School to bring CDL training to Mansfield. They launched their first class this week. The plans are to offer CDL Class A training on a monthly basis. CDL drivers are in large demand, and the closest training provider to Mansfield was over an hour away. We're happy that Mansfield is part of bringing this training to our commu, I'm sorry, that Madison is part of bringing this training to our community and helping to meet the demand for our local area. And that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Superintendent update?
Just a few things, boy, summer is really flying by quickly. I looked at the calendar today, and I'm usually reporting to you guys how many days of school are left. Well, tonight I am reporting that there are thirty-six calendar days left before school starts. Wow. So we are moving quickly through the summer. I just want to thank our custodial maintenance and IT crews for all of their work in getting our buildings ready, getting our classrooms ready, as well as the folks over in the bus garage, working hard to get the buses ready and be able to pass their inspections for next school year. Just wanted to give you an update on open positions that we have at this time. We have a STEM position here at the middle school open. We had it filled, and the person who we filled it with ended up backing out this week, so we're going to have to refill that one. We have a, an itinerant preschool position open over at South. We have at least one really quality candidate for that position, so we're hopeful that, that that will work out. Three intervention specialist openings here at the middle school. We have long-term subs set to go in those positions in the case that we don't end up filling those. Same with one intervention specialist at Madison South. And we have one preschool special ed paraprofessional position open, that was formerly called an aide. It's called, we, we, the term is paraprofessional now. So those are the openings that we have currently. The last thing that I have, I've provided you with a couple of handouts regarding our district's support organizations, which would be like our booster clubs and our parent-teacher organizations. And this is something that I've been trying to get time to work on, and I've been able to do that this summer. And the, the ultimate goal of this is to, for transparency for the district's support organizations with administration and the board. There's, we have a board policy ninety-two eleven, which I gave you a copy of, that kind of addresses this, that I, I know I was not aware of, and I'm not sure any of us were aware of until recently. So what I did, tried to do is take that board policy, build a framework and a document for what we, what we are going to require of our district's support organizations to provide to us, to make sure that they're doing everything right, and you as a board and we as administration are doing what we're supposed to be doing in overseeing that and, and making sure that, that those partnerships are in line and appropriate. So nothing adversarial, just want to be, want them to be transparent. And then what I, I, one of the things that you'll see in the list, I'm going to ask of, of each of those organizations is to come to a board meeting during the year and present to you all how they're doing financially, what plans they've completed prior to that, and then what projects they might have upcoming, so. If you want to give me any feedback on the document that I've created, feel free to do so. This is just a draft, but that's, that's kind of the game plan for moving forward with that.
Might be nice if they could show up the same night that their principal does, huh?
Yeah, I, I haven't really formalized that, but we do want to definitely get them here.
Yeah.
At least for one meeting a year.
And back to the open positions, everybody that was on the RIF list has either moved to another position somewhere else or taken something here?
That's correct. We still have some teachers on the recall list, however, those that are on there have taken a job in another district. So we don't have any teachers whose jobs were cut who are unemployed.
Okay.
Anything else, anybody? All right, going to item H, presentation, Mr. Ghost? How you doing, Mike?
Good morning, everyone, or afternoon. Like Rob said, we did do our inspections and everything passed, so we're all good there. School buses continue to be the safest mode of transportation to and from school. The designers of the bus through state construction standards make it very, very safe. It's almost like a semi that they, that they drive, it's a very big vehicle that is really safe. Last year, we transported about thirteen hundred students daily, and we traveled, our district is about fifty square miles. We traveled about two-hundred-and-nine-thousand miles for the year doing that. We also transported two, five of our buildings, as well as eight other schools in the, in the area. Last week, last year, we transported our students and student athletes approximately thirty-one thousand miles on top of that, for field trips, for going to COSI and whatnot. This year, due to student enrollment, we'll be reducing one route this year. Our routes have changed somewhat because of this, and we're working hard to assign the students their routes this year. We ask that parents every year, give us, you know, let us know what they want, because we don't want to be sending them to a grandma that moved to Florida or something. So they have to request transportation each and every year, and we, and they do that through final forms. And I've been working on getting all those students routed. Should have that done in another week and a half. This year, we will be, like in past, we, we usually send out a postcard, but we, I'm also going to try to check with tech and see if we can't do it email, send them email, and try to do it that way. It should save us a considerable amount of money. We may do both this year, then if it works out, we'll go with the, the email only. Last year, we started to update our camera systems, we put cameras, new cameras on four buses. This is a much-needed upgrade, as some of the systems were twelve years old, and they say they really only last about five, so we've got quite a bit beyond that. But we're very excited about that, and we're hoping through grants and other funding available that we can replace all our route bus cameras within about four years. Again, like in past years, we're asking any student that's open enrolled, that they figure out other transportation for that first month, and then we'll just have to see, depending on how many kids we have and whether or not we can transport them, whether we can do that. So probably in the first, middle of September, we, we'll have them call us. That's about all I have, any questions?
Nope, thank you, Mike.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Neron?
Good evening, everyone. So just a quick update here, all the schools are on track to be finished first, second week in August for all interior work. The only, the only one school that's a little bit lacking behind right now is the high school. I've implemented that we're going to, on a five-year schedule, we're going to be stripping out one wing of the school every year, on top of scrubbing and recoating the rest of the floors. Taking a little bit longer, because probably we got about fifteen years worth of wax on these floors, so things are going a little bit slower. After that, everybody's going to be outside, groundskeeping, fixing up the schools as far as beautification process. High school roof project, that's actually going to be starting the first week, or I'm sorry, excuse me, the second week in August. It's not going to interfere with school, it's over the career tech wings, the machining lab, carpentry, welding. So as far as their vehicles, equipment, dumpsters, things of that nature, they'll all be behind the school. It shouldn't affect anything with students. They're expecting it to be about a forty-five to fifty-day process, start to finish. We had a south parking lot, we had an extension, about a twenty to twenty-five-foot extension, put on the east side, so the Illinois Avenue side of the parking lot. We were running into the same situation that we had at Mifflin in the past. Cars are not able to get off of Illinois Avenue, and buses are not able to leave the school. Just the abundance of people that are driving their kids and picking them up now. So we've extended that parking lot, they were supposed to start today with sealing of the entire lot. Rain held that up, so it's going to be moved till tomorrow, go from there. We are also, on page two of this, there's a, there's a picture here, we are rearranging how the traffic pattern is going to be held. There will be four pickup lines or drop-off lines and a one dedicated kindergarten line. That'll be the most interior line, goes around, comes down the center section. It's going to help streamline the pickup and drop-off process, as well as maximizing the amount of cars that we can actually fit in there. We will be losing a few parking spots due to that addition of the parking lot and the rearrangement. However, we're going to add more to the south end of the parking lot to make up for that. Eastview, we're actually going to be sealing their parking lot as well, there should be there Friday, and again, repaving, or re-line striping those for pickup and drop-off. The high school threw on a project kind of late on me, they wanted to re-stripe the parking lot, but color coding parking spots. So faculty will be orange, students' parking will be white. They want to be able to break this up, because they're having a lot of problems with students that are parking right up on the front row, not allowing the staff to have ample parking for themselves. So that's something that's, uh, going to be addressed next week, they'll be out to redo those. The following year, when we do our next section of parking lot, they'll come back and reseal the entire parking lot and then re-stripe once again. We had a career, a career tech adult ed hallway. So the old DuraRock paneling that was on the walls there, that the kids have been breaking for the last twenty years, you know, putting holes in, so on and so forth, we have eliminated all that. They're in the middle of a project, it's about a six-day project, they are going to be the adult ed side of the hallway, office side of the hallway, like, so the north side of the hallway. It's going to be a new product, it's kind of what you see on the exterior of most modern buildings. It's kind of a, a rough textured, kind of like sandpapery-type textured, but it's about a six-layer process. So there's a hardyboard backer, which is much stronger than drywall, to help eliminate the hole issues.
So we'll be busting knuckles, is that what?
That, that's more what they'll be breaking versus the walls, so. You'll know the person that's been messing with it. And then on the library side of the hallway, we have tore that DuraRock out, and through the twenty feet that we opened up was all block wall that had been painted once before. We tore out the next 20 feet and we come into the old entrance to the library from the exterior of the building. So we've had to do some creative design work on that. So we have actually painted walls on each end. The brick section has been covered up with basically like columns right and left. And then it's going to be a smooth surface over the bricks that we're then going to have CT and career tech design, whatever they would like for a wrap to go over that section of the wall. It can be changed out as often as they'd like, but something just kind of spruce it up and modernize the hallway. Middle school gym and high school gym all have been resurfaced. Ohio Floris came out and redid those. Last year, we ran into some situations where they didn't do as well of a job as what we would expect them to do. There was a lot of scuff marks, black shoe marks that were actually waxed into the floor or sealed into the floor. They have corrected that situation for us and they actually gave us a little bit of a discount to make up for it. Room 213, this is another project that Mr. Conway had thrown on us kind of late in the summer. We are converting that room into a conference room now. So stripped out all the walls, we refinished the floors. We're adding some more electric to add some air conditioning for that room. That's one thing that they had not had in the past. It's gonna take some time. It probably won't be ready for the start of school. We need to paint and do some other work in there as well. But he's also ordering new furniture. Again, we gotta wait till that arrives. And then high school boiler. So we have talked in the past, we lost two more boilers this winter at the high school. We have sat down with Lock &amp; Bar, the company that we purchase these boilers through, as well as Campbell, their distributor. They are working us a deal that's kind of too good to be true. We are able to purchase four new boilers for the price of two and revamp our system at the school to make the new boilers in a closed-loop system. The problem that we've run into that's leading to these boilers failing is they are part of the old cast iron boiler system, which is full of iron, things of that nature. These new systems don't like that and it's causing, what is it called? Electrolysis inside the heat exchangers, which are then creating holes. We tried to replace, or no, I'm sorry, we haven't tried to replace, we've tried to repair these heat exchangers and unfortunately, it's not something that's repairable. We were kind of their test mule for this. So we are working out Campbell, who is who we purchased equipment through. They are not part of a consortium. So now we're going out to a three-bid process on this. So we're in the middle of getting scopes to work. Full blanket of, you know, what's gonna be needed so that we can then put it out to be bid on. The total price for the project is $135,000. The total price for four brand-new boilers is almost $140,000. So they're selling us the boilers at $19,000 apiece, which is a huge savings. It's 47% savings over cost. So that is something that we are looking to do. Then we have our turf project, softball, baseball fields. They're gonna be starting in September. They're looking at taking, well, they should be finished by the end of October. So roughly a month and a half, two months to complete. Then they'll be transitioning over to the football fields. Timeline on the football field, they're saying is only about a month. So the big work's already been done. It's just more of a replacement for it. That's all I've got to add right now. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item I, treasurer's business, entertain a motion to accept. Salute.
I'll second.
Discussion.
First thing, before I go on to mine, I'm gonna springboard a little bit. One, Mr. Neuron said the turf project paid for from permanent improvement funds and booster donations and private donations, so it's not general fund. Yes, the transfers over the years were from general fund, but they was purposeful. The thing he was talking about with the conference room is a principal's fund money, not general fund. He gets money from doing other things throughout the year, fundraisers, whatever. It's not taxpayer money. So I just wanted to point that out, that there's those things that he's talking about. Quite a few of the big projects are not taxpayer money. The boilers, however, we have to have heat to have school. You can't have a school without heat. And they've just, they failed. So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. Mr. Neuron did a lot of legwork. I pushed him pretty hard, sort of Mr. Peterson pushed him pretty hard to, you know, just every way possible to get the best savings we could. That's why when he said we were test skinny pig for the welding, he went above and beyond to try to make sure that there was no way these could be repaired before we had to go the route we did. So I just want to talk about that before I went on to stuff. First thing we'll do is the financial report. And I called it the financial slash annual report because if you look at this, I changed it around a little bit. Pages five, six, and seven all have to do with the end-of-the-year financial because June was the end of the fiscal year. So rather than just do a monthly report, I put the annual parts in there as well. I'll just start at the beginning, revenues. You know, we were up 4% for the fiscal year, but of that 4%, more than three and a half of it was the complete collection of the first initial levy we had in 2023. So if we took that out of the mix, we really were only up about a half a percent, which is relatively flat. If you go on to the next page, expenditures, expenditures are up over 7.5%. So if your revenues are flat and your expenditures go up, that means you're deficit spending. It's just, it's all there is to it. Same in your own household. If you make $40,000 a year and all of a sudden your expenses go up two grand, well, you're deficit spending that year. You're gonna have to, you gotta cut something somewhere. The problem, I'll just keep going through this because I've said it over and over again, that the expenditure is going up so much as insurance. I mean, if you look at the benefit increase year over year from '24 to '25, that was almost $1 million, which is like three times, almost three times more than the purchase services went up and almost three times more than supplies went up and almost seven times more than the capital outlay went up and just about double what salaries went up. It's just insurance is outrageously expensive and it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. We are implementing some newer things and we're going to talk a little bit more in the coming months about other things we can work on to try to mitigate the costs. But that's, it's a kind of a double-edged sword. You have to have insurance. People have to have insurance and we're kind of stuck. Like I said, the last few pages just were where we ended the fiscal year. How much our general fund revenues are and what percentage each category came from, like real estate and property taxes, state foundation, homestead and rollback. That's what the state reimburses for parts of the property tax that are built in the code that they reimburse for. And other operating revenues are things like interest and Medicaid reimbursements and things like that. So half of our money comes from state foundations. So anytime the legislature decides to play with what they're going to do either for us or against us in the state, in the budget, you know, 50% of our funds come from that. So it really affects us big time. We did get a preliminary, what's the word I'm looking for, preliminary?
Simulation.
Simulation, thank you, thank you. Preliminary simulation and we, the first year, we're going to gain somewhere around $250,000 and then the second year, they're gonna take $115,000 from us, something like that. So it's, they take it in one hand and give it away in the other. So we're basically gonna end up close to flat over the next two years with the budget. And the other thing, part of the budget, I believe I said it a couple of months ago, what they did, what the governor did and is still in there. The way the funding works, they have two components. They have a component that says how wealthy the district is in getting and they updated that with FY '24 property valuations and FY '23 federally adjusted gross income valuations. And the other part of the budget of that is how much does it cost to educate a kid? So how much do we have paying salaries? How much does insurance cost? How much does it cost to operate a building? Well, they didn't update that. They left it at 2022 values. So when the state plays around and does things like that, essentially what it does is, over the course of the two years, it shifts more of the burden from the state to the local. So that's what the governor did. And then in the other two parts of the legislature down there, the Senate and the House, they are doing everything they can to try to reduce income taxes. So they're saying, well, now you can't try to get it in the, you can't try to get it on property taxes. So the governor's pushing it the one way and the other two are pushing it the other and we're unfortunately caught in the middle. General fund expenditures were up, but the vast majority of that was the advance to the self-insurance fund. Had we not had that advance, we'd have been just about flat this year in operating. And then the last page is, well, the second to last page is all the other funds other than, like bond fund, which pays for the building, the adult ed fund, all the other funds combined. I pulled those out and then the grant funds. So there's a brief synopsis on that. And then the last page is just a comparison of where we ended up in end of June, where I said we should be in November, where I said we should be in May, and where we actually ended up in the variances.
Can you explain the difference between the property tax revenue and the personal property tax revenue?
Yeah, property tax revenue is all the residents. Personal property tax is basically public utility.
Okay.
Melissa, what was your question? I didn't hear it.
Oh, sorry. I had asked if he could explain the difference on the last page between the property tax revenue and the personal property tax.
The reason it's broken out separate is because property tax revenue is broken down into class one and class two and there's millage rates and they vary. Public utility is full-voted millage, not broken down. And public utility pays, there's no delinquencies or, well, I shouldn't say no, there was one, but by a couple of days, two years ago. But it's broken out separate because it is, it is very separate. For example, we're not fortunate enough to have a pipeline, but all those other districts that have pipeline go in that. And the reason they call it personal property tax revenue, it's, there used to be a, we used to get collect tax on businesses' inventory and stuff like that and that went in that line. Well, these things basically are dictated by the state of Ohio and they just didn't happen to change that line, so that's what it's called.
Oh, thank you.
The next thing I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about, the second thing is the resolution. This is a culmination of all the hard work that you all have put in over the past four months on trying to, on doing a tax policy and trying to figure out, you know, the most fair way to fund the schools and how to come up with a good solution that would be, you know, benefit senior citizens, benefit the school, just be an equitable, good. You guys sat in all meetings. This, what you decided for the income tax and conversion takes two resolutions. This is the first resolution and it's called the Resolution of Necessity, which I have to send this, part of, one of the lines in there says the treasurer has to send this to the high department of taxation. I send this resolution to the high department of taxation. High department of taxation, then over the next, hopefully, week, they're pretty quick. I'll probably even send it tonight. Will send us, okay, if this is what your resolution of necessity is, then you need to go on the ballot for this kind of an income tax, this percent. And then the board then, over the next, like hopefully the week of the 28th of July, sometime around then, we're gonna have to have another resolution to pass that we can submit to the county so then we can be put on the ballot. So this kind of a thing takes more hoops to jump through. So this is the first resolution, it's called the Resolution of Necessity, to tell the high department of taxation, we need this kind of money. Can you tell me what kind of, what percentage it's gonna be? The next, okay, the next one is called the Resolution Declaring Intent to Cease Collections of the 7.5 mil levy. This will only take place if, if an income tax passes. But this resolution says in there, if proposed income tax is approved, what this would do then by passing this resolution is January 1st, the county auditor then would stop collecting the 7.5 mil, on the 7.5 mil levy. So the income tax would start January 1st and your property tax or somebody's property tax would stop January 1st if they passed this, okay? But one, this second resolution, the only way it will go into effect is if you look down at section one, if the proposed income tax is approved by the voters. So this was just a resolution that you had discussed to make sure got put on so the public was well aware that it's not the intent to double tax people. The intent is to replace what we had passed with something else that would be more equitable. Because that's what you guys had all discussed. And the last resolution, which is the recommendation to return the advance. There's still a negative fund balance in the O24 fund, but I would rather run the, and the auditors are gonna have a problem with me anyway because it's a negative fund balance. You're not supposed to. But I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place. I'd rather have a negative fund balance in the self-insurance fund than I would the general fund because the general fund pays their salaries and self-insurance fund pays medical mutual. And if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna have a negative fund balance, I'd rather have it in the fund that pays medical mutual than the one that pays our teacher salaries. So are there any questions on any of my resolutions?
No. Ms. Amy Walker couldn't be here tonight, so she did send me a statement that she wanted me to read on her behalf. So it just says, "I would like to extend my gratitude to my fellow board members, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Stevens, for showing up to every lengthy work session as we explored tax structures, specifically one that is appropriate and fair for our community. Mr. Conway's guidance and patience as he put up with our many questions is much appreciated. The intense deliberation that took place at these work sessions reflects the commitment to long-term financial stability for Madison as well as to a shared investment in the future of our community. I am excited that we are moving away from a philosophy that unfairly taxes property owners and toward a more just system based on one's ability to pay while giving relief to senior citizens on a fixed income. It is with deep regret that I'm unable to be included in the vote on this resolution, but I would like to publicly express my support as it is grounded in the best interest of our entire community."
I second that.
Earned income. Can you give a quick explanation, earned income?
An earned income is anything that is reported on your W-2. So if you have social security, that's not earned income. If you're on disability or welfare, that's not earned income. It has to be something that is reported on a W-2 to the state of Ohio.
That's something the board worked hard and talked about, had many, many discussions.
Yes. For those of you sitting in the audience, they did deliberate a lot on that point. And because there are a couple of different types of taxes that you could do. You could do a traditional, which would do estates and everybody else. And then there's the earned, which just only taxes on W-2 earnings, wages. And that was, is the way they had discussed and what they ultimately chose because it was the most equitable and fair, especially to the population of Madison that is on a fixed income.
And I do have one last question. I know I already asked you earlier, but just so that it's kind of publicly stated. I have, I've seen a couple of employees concerned that they're going to be taxed because they work in the district even if they don't live in the district. So just to be clear, the income tax would be for anybody who resides in the district regardless of what county they work in.
That is true.
And people who work in the district or in the county but live outside of the district would not be subject to the tax.
That is true. So if you work here but live in Mansfield, you don't pay the tax. If you live here but work in Cleveland. If you live here but work in Cleveland, you do pay the tax. I'm a perfect example, I live in Clearport, I pay an income tax to school district, I'm going to tax Clearport, but I work here. So.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? All right, go ahead, we'll call.
Mr. Wickton.
Four.
Mrs. Melissa Walker.
Four.
Mrs. Cottler.
Four.
Mr. Moser.
Four. All right, item J, matters related to personnel, entertain a motion to accept.
So moved. I'll second.
Discussion, I can't vote for Jenna Hendershot, Brian Moser, under C, just to let you know.
Under C?
Yep.
So, you're going to be abstaining for letter C?
Yeah. Well, just for those two people. Discussion, anybody?
All right, and this includes the addendum, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, Mrs. Melissa Walker.
Four.
Mrs. Cottler.
Four.
Mr. Wickton.
Four.
Mr. Moser.
Four, except noted.
That addendum is K.
Okay.
Superintendent's business, so that would not include the addendum.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Well, that's my fault.
Do we have to do Jesse separate?
Yes.
Yeah, we have to have a motion.
You need a motion for that?
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Okay, so I'm assuming, Mrs. Melissa Walker.
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Wickton.
Four.
Mrs. Cottler.
Four.
Mr. Moser.
And moving on to K with the addendum, entertain a motion for superintendent's business to include the addendum.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just want to comment on one of the items. Most of these are contracts, annual contracts and different things, but I do want to comment on the one board policy that we are going to do one and only reading on, and that's regarding our attendance policy, and just want to have that in order prior to the school year starting. And I don't think our August board meeting would be before the school year starts, so I just wanted to have that in place in time, that's all.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Melissa Walker.
Four.
Mr. Wickton.
Four.
Mrs. Cottler.
Four.
Mr. Moser.
Four. And then, M, President's Business, entertain a motion.
Oh, visitor's comments, he skipped.
Oh, did I miss it?
That was all down at the bottom.
All right, sorry about that, visitor's comment, oh, it is. Any visitor comments? Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, to item M, President's Business, entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
There will be no voting afterwards?
We need to come up with a time for our next meeting, hopefully, last week in July.
Oh, so we, so when, he needs to meet before end of July.
Has to be before July 31st.
Okay. I can't do the 31st, but I should be able to do any other day.
The 30th works better for me, Wednesday.
Yeah, and that's fine with me.
Are you available the 30th?
Hopefully, as long as I'm not on jury duty.
Do we want to do that at four?
I could do like 4:15.
Yeah, it doesn't say 4:15, four?
But you can't?
Well, pending, because I'm assigned to jury duty, but it's canceled these two weeks, so I got to call back in on the 28th, so I don't know how long jury duty would be. Hopefully.
Well, that whole week would be, yeah.
Well.
Well, he needs three.
We only need three.
Yeah, so 4:15 is fine.
You're expendable.
Thank you, anytime. 4:15 works, so.
Okay. We'll just hope that it's canceled.
July, hey, man.
July 30th or 4:15.
July 30th, 4:15, here.
At the board office or here?
It could be at the board office, because it's just passing that resolution to go to the county auditor and approving the corrective action plan that ODEW needs, because we're basically in fiscal caution. I mean, we have, it's a precautionary plan that has to be submitted to the state.
All right, and then, so we got that set, do we?
We need to vote.
Vote, and then go into executive session. Motion made, any other discussion? We'll call.
Mrs. Melissa Walker.
Four.
Mr. Wickton.
Four.
Mrs. Cottler.
Four.
Mr. Moser.
Four. And then, we are going into executive session, and there'll be no voting afterwards. Thank you all for attending, I appreciate it.
Is that, that's the motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay.